We're gonna call the meeting in order.
As required by the Unplugged Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notices meeting was provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four by publication of notice, the Express Times and Harding County Democrat and by posting a said notice to municipal on the same date. Mayor Barsney?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Baylor is excused. Mr. Beam?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. Laboring is here somewhere. Uh, Mr. Finley?
To the flag of the United States of America, the true Republicans will stand one nation under God, indivisible, and one being just as well.
Looking for a motion to approve the limits from the regular meeting of all the certificates. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. If I have any questions, comments, corrections, or lesions, roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor is sorry, excused. Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the Treasury's report, September's bill list, the interim bill list, the budget extension clean port, and the interest statement.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the tax collector's taxes report to all of the twenty twenty-four. A second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Department of Sports Chief, do you have anything to add? Either way, you're ready to report?
No.
Do they have any questions in the chief?
No.
Joe, TPW, you have anything?
No, nothing. I'm good.
How much malt would that one bill strictly for Thomas Stewart Park? What's that? The uh, um, the bill for Thomas Stewart Park, the mulch?
That, that bill is not anything right now.
Oh, of, there was one here on our list, like, for like seven thousand nine hundred and change. I just carry some in your.
Oh, okay. Uh, it probably was that it got emailed. Um, there was a hundred and seventy yards since we've, uh, expanded.
Expanded.
And it's about five inches below.
Yeah, it was definitely low. It's below the line that you had on some of those.
Well, that's just gonna give us some pass when, like, you know, it doesn't happen every year.
Bill, when was the last time we had that done?
I do it every year.
Every year of?
Yeah, because of the rotting and the sediment.
That's it.
Is that in the playground itself or? We just, about everything. No, in the playground itself. Right, yeah, right. You ever have, we have that though? What's that? We components, we never have to prove that else?
No, no, it's still spongy enough. That's what they want. They wanted to be component and it fills these sponges and stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Now, she's talking to Lisa. You have anything you wanted to add?
Only to thank Tammy for her coverage last month and, uh, my volunteers today for the brochures for Community Day.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, please. It's, I'm sorry, the minutes that, uh, that we just approved, um, they were Tammy's?
Uh, Tammy took great notes and she, uh, began the draft and then I finalized them. Yep.
I wasn't sure. I thought so and I was like, oh, this.
Yeah.
Did all right, okay.
We said, are we gonna discuss Halloween party and then you and I?
Oh, I don't know. That's up to.
Yeah, for me.
Well, I don't know. I want to, you know, to be thoughtful, you know?
I'd have to look it up. I could do so probably on my phone with the curse of the meeting.
Do you think we have enough?
Probably around three thousand, I believe.
Wait till next month. I just don't want to cook a place, you know, next month and we're around the same time.
Maybe try to reserve the date and get a price?
Okay. The, the one idea that I had thrown out was that, um, I, you know, for a clerk's luncheon, we were able to specify a menu, keep it, um, a little simpler, offer three options, and that might be a way to have some additional savings. So, if you want me to look into that, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Do you want me to ask about dates on Fridays in early December? Think so.
And then actually, while Joe's over here, this is a Joe-Lisa combo question. How are we making out on the sewer pump purchases? Because I'm under the impression we're running strictly on a rented temporary pump right now.
So, as of, when I was drafting this, thinking about it, projecting it for the meeting, I'm expecting still two more weeks out.
Two more weeks, yeah.
They promised to do anything they could expedite it, but.
Okay. Sorry, I'm interested in that.
Yeah.
Don't encode enforcement report. Uh, Paul, you have anything you want to add for that? Everybody, I know, I saw it looked pretty A-OK. I know he's got essential working on a handful of problems, but, yeah, no, it looked fine. Report reports? Nothing really.
Not been a question, right?
Uh, hey, CEO, if anybody had any questions, comments, or on it? Looking for a motion to accept the, uh, Police Department, BPW, Township Clerk, voting in the Southern District Court, and the CEO.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any further questions, Thomas?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Any reports? Lillian, you have any reports?
Actually, uh, no, I have a question for Rich, but, um, would I be able to just ask them?
Yep.
So, we're having another yard sale come up shortly, and so Greg Glassner wanted me to ask you if you can appoint a few members as deputies to go out, and if people didn't get a permit, get them to pay. I believe that that's not something we could do, but is it something they can just go around and have them pay that day? Since it is an ordinance to get a permit to have a yard sale.
I'll look it up right now.
I have a couple of problems. Can I see it?
Uh, what is the order? Can they definitely tell us? Wow, I don't think they definitely know. I bet that. Um. My question is, if we're gonna have.
Four yards, you know, four yards, four point one, is that it, or is it the what do you mean?
Yeah, chapter four, general licensing.
I mean, I will.
For Nash Board.
See how many permits they sell in, in, in yard.
Well, in yards, you know, wait, but I don't know if there's any way of controlling that.
Right.
Well, you're relying on people's honesty.
Somebody going, like, we saw.
Right.
You know, and answer for that.
Well, we can keep going. Thank you. That was all that we had, I think.
Nope, you're right.
Yeah, open space. Um, couple of things we discussed, uh, Frank Pinto, uh, put a letter in your packet, pretty much explains everything, um. They really want a credit card machine, so Shannon, any further on that discussion with the president over there with the rent?
I think Lisa was still waiting for answers from the rent department. Lisa, did she ever respond to you?
Um, I didn't get a response directly from Colleen, I don't believe, but, uh, the auditors feel that we probably can do it. They're just concerned about coming up with, you know, the procedures to follow with having it, so.
Yeah, they said that most people come with ca- uh, the credit card, you know, and it would, the reconciliation would be daily. When you close out the machine, it gets dumped into whatever account it, you know, it's assigned to, so. Um, all right, so that's been working on. DCA grant for twenty twenty-five, some suggestions, basketball lights behind us, lights up at Stecker, and bathrooms maybe up at Stecker, whether or how we might have to build an extension. Uh, need a holding tank or sometimes dissectic system though. So, uh, it's something to start thinking about for, uh, the DCA grant for twenty twenty-five. Now, the grant show for twenty twenty-four, um, is that all completed or what? Are we getting some?
Twenty twenty-four is for Reinhardt Park. Twenty twenty-three should be ready to submit here, hopefully by the end of October. I got stuff to run the water line to the concession stand that'll, that'll head to a valve stop outside.
Okay.
We don't have a subject there, so there's no sense in getting the safety stuff in there yet, but.
Can you get a?
Two yard hybrids, so.
Can you get like a holding tank? I mean, they mentioned.
That's gonna be a border health, uh, question.
Right. There's no sense putting a sink in, like you said, it's not gonna work. Okay, uh, the other thing, the recreation department would like to know if they can put up the list of champions on the full board. Some classified recognizing, uh, you know, the kids that are winning championships, stuff like that, so. You know.
I mean, I don't, but is that actually on my list?
They don't donate. They, I believe they donated that to us, um, you know, what's the opinion? You know, we're not doing it actually now, but.
I, I.
Uh, it'd be facing the field, so I would see it, you know?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so I'll have them come up with some type of this file or some type of plaque. Uh, refund versus credit up to the township committee where, when some event, uh, or, yeah, event is canceled, I think, uh, Lisa, we had some discussion on that. The open space committee feels that if it's an event like, um, they're not using the pavilion that, um, and if they don't have a rain day, um, I guess they would spend, yeah, a lot. Uh, refund versus, uh, let's see, the pavilion, absolutely no refunds because it's rather, for us, it's state of emergency. Um, Joe, kitchen clean up at these, up at Stecker, I noticed a bill for eight hundred dollars.
Thank for the hood system.
The hood, okay. All right, so is it under state contract? You get that, is that a company under the, a state contract?
No, that was, uh, it's getting, uh, a couple of different quotes and use of the lowest quote.
Okay, all right, they, they wanted to know that, okay. Uh, school board, uh, we had a large crowd at our last meeting and, you know, they all complained about the five hundred thousand dollar tax, you know, uh, mistake. Nobody complained about them going out and raising the taxes eight, nine hundred thousand without vote of approval. Not one person.
They did.
Yeah?
They did. Yes, they did.
I don't recall that. What's, who? Oh, wait, okay.
Yes, they did.
But, but the majority of them up there were complaining. Who made this mistake?
But they were complaining about the taxes being raised as well in the ordinance.
I must have slept through that, what?
No, a lot of people were talking about.
And other than that, oh, that's it. I got a couple of stuff under executives, so I'm a little bit confused.
I'm, I'm aware it's a ring, but can you work with Frank Pinto for next month's meeting and within the rules, maybe approval, because this is rain days can be given, but all the way these days, Bill, I don't, I don't know that, does that mean, like, somebody is raining out and they call in, so can we make it up in two weeks if it is the LT, yeah? And is that, I, I mean, I don't understand.
Yeah.
And, yeah, fundraising discussion by nature, any nonprofit organized, a whole thing, the park is being fundraised, so I, I think I get that. The Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts have an event there, they can sell their.
Yeah, like tomorrow, you know, Saturday.
They can sell their cookies.
Yes.
But a realty, a realtor company can't come in, rent it, and sell something that day or something like.
Right, yeah.
Only an.
Yeah, commercial, yeah.
Well, Frank, that they'll next make sure.
So, I think our question had actually been that the, the ordinance prohibits fundraising. They were supposed to discuss if they wanted to continue that. I'm not, I, I, I'm a little confused too. I'll talk to Frank.
Sounds like if, like, the PTO, if somebody wants to have a fundraiser there.
Right.
Right, we would let them bill.
Right.
But we're not gonna let a, a private entity come in, so like, for the day. I think that's what I'm reading.
Right, you're not gonna, you know, I mean, the freeze.
Yeah. Well, again, I guess if it's the Boy Scout, the Girl Scout, the freeze gate, I'm gonna, no, exactly. I'm gonna, we're at the pavilion and bring it just to town. Okay.
That news, yeah.
Well, uh, Paul, what I have?
Uh, just since, um, but it's a piece of good news, wildly related, that the state has finally approved us moving forward with state regulations to try to become a state squad. Um, so that's a good thing. That was the biggest hurdle that we had. We have a hundred and eighty days to jump through, nine more hoops, but after reviewing it today, all eight of the nine have already been done, so we're in pretty good shape. So, maybe within sixty days. Uh, at least seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday, we can be a, uh, totally paid squad. Hopefully.
Hopefully. We're getting old.
Yes. I hear Paul all the time. Especially towards Mike and Alan.
I have no reason to be on there.
Oh. I just wanted to tell you off before you're, play off the get down before I even get to item number one. All right, then, well, yeah, it was a rough game. Uh, rough ending.
I'll sleep for it.
Well, you should have, you should have waited. As a non-able fan, you would have enjoyed it. All right, uh, just a couple of things. Uh, Comcast, I see Comcast guys are, are here, so we'll be dealing with them shortly. Uh, uh, the MS four, which is following the storm, stormwater, uh, regulations that are going through updating from, that's required by the DEP. I see those ordinances are all for second reading later, so. That's that. Um, and really, there, there's, there's nothing else. There's the dioxin thing we're gonna talk about, and we'll get to that. That's also later on in, on the thing, so. Uh, that's what I got. I'm gonna handle a few of them, uh, we can say.
Mike, I mean, you have sort of executive?
Yes, Mayor.
Old business, municipal complex update, Joe, Lisa, Rich, other than I know, we're jumping through hoops over some of that with the, uh, give the grant application, can I? So, I guess that's, everything's pretty much on hold until we get that figured out, right? And I think I talked about that in executive.
Yeah.
I think we do have an update for executive.
Is there any partner reservation? I think you're, new business, anybody has anything they want to bring up and anything?
Yeah, um. I'd like to talk about putting, and Mike, this will include you, uh, uh, weight limit on boardings. Uh, with the new warehousing that's showing up in the Alpha Complex and right there on Edge Road in Bohat. Um, there's lots of concerns about Tractataro is trying to navigate their way through Still Valley and Boardings. So, our portion of Boardings, uh, can we put weight limits on it just as we did on Humont, Washington, and Parliament? I mean, we own the road, right?
Star, we, well, we don't, uh, yeah, I guess we own the whole. Yeah, I didn't know. Until, until it connects with.
Still Valley, right.
Still Valley, right.
Uh, sure. Uh, no DOT approvals, it's ours, we can do it? I think we need that to intersect with the time.
That's there, that's, thank you. It obviously intersects with, well, well, just for, can they save?
All right, so, yeah. So, we're not, we're reaching out to the state DOT?
Yes.
Just to be safe.
On boardings, right.
How do we start that part?
It's under seventy.
You override, you need to, uh.
Like way.
Get it started for, for an ordinance adoption and see what the DOT is gonna require of us, which may not be much. Um, so that's, that could be very decisive, tax guys.
I want to leave the next meeting in Orange, if you're in Orange.
Will I make a motion to have Mike to, uh, write the ordinance for?
And why now? What's it about? Work with Mr. Laboring.
A second.
How about get some luck?
Can you add the fruit on that? Because I know you discussed that past.
Yep.
But being, you know.
Babies and babies.
Uh, we ought to do like Felsburg, they had like eight or twenty-three of them.
Robo paddle and a whole bunch, too, but, yeah.
Just babies.
David's Road is safe. County road up both sides.
County road up both sides.
Uh, well, no, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the old thing.
Six forty back, or, you know, that's the shortest county road in the county, I think, probably, but it's county road.
Why it's commonly referred to as the missing lane?
If we had all things. But, like, we just do, like, Felsburg do, and they're like, just do all our municipal. Can you look at Felsburg Door and see what you think?
Yeah, Winter probably drafted it, so I could just.
So, I mean, is anybody that side?
No.
I'm glad that I didn't back for it all.
Me too.
And just remember, we had to exclude, like, local delivery, so that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. All right, so. Well, we've got all our motion.
Excuse me. I did not get the second on that one.
Me.
That was you? Okay, thank you. And I'm checking. Uh, Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, stop residential, twenty-four residential, neutralizing leased foreign properties in township, only farmland by public. Is there one second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments on that? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Before we, roll call. I was, I talked to Frank Pinto and we've had some combinations, and I know we're jumping around. We have gone from one-year leases and we're talking about, no, five-year leases. And, and, and I'm kind of on board with the thought process that five years is going to bring a little bit more revenue for them and such like that, but I'm still concerned with some of it that I'm not quite sure I want to move forward with these five-year and keep it at a one-year. And I don't know that we have enough time to talk about it before we do this, so I'd like to table this for a, a month and have conversations on it. And again, that's strictly me, I don't, you know.
Okay.
Uh, because, you know, Frank has said that the five-year will definitely bring in more revenues. I just don't know how much more, but, um, I'm just thinking that I'd like to chat about it, and this is just something I started to talk about with Frank earlier this week.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
No.
Mr. Beam?
No.
Mr. Kenyek?
No.
And Ms. McDermott?
No.
Looking for a motion to adopt Resolution Ninety-four, an opposition proposal, approval to change the regulation of Delaware work on national recreation area to a national park and reserve. Anybody want a second there? Anybody want to discuss this? And if everybody understands what it's about? I, I think the key problem is that they're making it a national park. I, I don't know if they allow hunting and fishing and in natural parks, but I think that's what the major opposition is. I don't know if they allow certain camping. I think it limits type of camping and, uh, I, I get it, would change a lot of the usage up there, and that's what everybody's concerned about, so. Anybody okay? Roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
I mean, there's something that opened up public hearing on ordinance number one, oh, eight, twenty twenty-four, Norris, and then chapter twenty-five attached code entitled Stormwater Control to reflect amendments required by the NJC, the Stormwater Management. Do I make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone wishing to make a comment regarding that one, to drop the front of the podium, make a comment? Seeing none, make a motion to close public hearing? Oh, 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 okay. All in favor?
All right.
Uh, looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one, oh, eight, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
One second. Second, any further questions, the comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to open public hearing on ordinance one oh nine, twenty twenty-four, in order to amend chapter twenty-five of township code entitled Stormwater Control, who had a new article entitled Tree Removal. Anybody want to make that?
I'll make that.
A second, uh, anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to make a comment on this ordinance, is often come up and make a comment? Seeing none, make a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one oh nine, seventy twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
One second. I'll second. Any further questions, comments? Roll call?
I, I just want to comment. I think it's, this is a state mandate.
Yeah.
So, I'll be voting no, but I think it's the gift to anybody.
Okay, that's kind of funny, because I'll be voting no. They also think it's very unenforceable. Yes, well, that is a right on point of that. Who's gonna, uh, you said it. I'm gonna take it, I just had to cut down a disease space in front of my eyes. It, it was thirty-six inches in diameter, according to this movement. I now needed to put eighteen trees on my third of an acre.
Did you look at that?
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh.
I, I've known it for a year, and it was tough, and I would have had to have put eighteen trees on a third of an acre.
Well, it's good to cut it down before the ordinance.
Exactly.
Well done, well done, this thirty. There's all air for it, but there we go.
So, uh, I think this is, I, I, look, I cut one down, plant one, no problem with that. Cut one down, plant eighteen, that's a problem.
It's worth the enforcement.
Yeah, and I don't know how you would, you know.
And, you know, in, in a dense, you know, city type of environment, I guess, if A, there's not as many trees, and B, so you have policing, more police-type enforcement available.
I mean, if they're, if they're gonna put a full, allow us to, and pay for a full-time employee to drive neighborhoods and street companies coming, so be it, but I'm not seeing that happen.
Well, no, and they should also be, get all the pet waste, uh, you know?
Right.
The, like, you know, let's, let's just do it all.
Right.
So, anyway.
Well, you know, some towns do have tree commissions or tree departments, you know, and the next mandate's gonna be, oh, you're gonna need to, you know, hire somebody, you know, to enforce this.
Well, this isn't far from it, but.
So, I think the mayor last month said the only way it's gonna get enforced is if your neighbor rat you out.
Right, well, yes.
So, well, we gotta vote first.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes. We love it.
Noted. Mr. Beam?
No.
Mr. Kenyek? Ms. McDermott?
No.
What do we do? We have no choice, so we're off to this.
Well, eventually they'll catch up with us, but we'd have to reintroduce it, because it was voted down at second reading.
Well, there, there have been, and your office has, has not worked on.
Yeah, I don't want to have this conversation publicly.
No, I'm just saying, there's some.
So, we're going with execution for that.
Right, 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 understood, but, yeah.
No, so what's my case? Said that.
I don't want to discuss the legality of things, other towns we represent might have.
I, that's not where I.
It's like, it's like banning Jake breaking.
I will sit tight till, till, ask to do otherwise.
Oh, my.
Well, I'm looking for a lesson. I'm looking, uh, looking for a motion open public hearing, ordinance number one, ten, twenty, twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-five of the township code entitled Stormwater Control, who had a new article entitled Private Unharmed Salts, or anything, anybody want to make that?
I'll make that motion.
A second, that motion. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
No, no, we're, uh, second reading, oh.
Oh, we have a smoke in the public, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone wishing to come up and make a comment? Why you guys step off the podium, you're gonna be a citizen. I'm going to this one. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one, ten, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Okay. Looking for a motion open public hearing, ordinance number one eleven, comes from, uh, the ordinance mandated in connection to public water system for properties within the Willow Springs Road and Wood Springs Road ground and water regeneration.
I'll make that motion.
About second?
Okay. We have questions, comments, or any, Mike, can you explain a little bit what we're doing here?
Well, this, I think, is pretty simple. This is the basically the connection, uh, on the public water systems to Zep Agri Town. This is just about that. He, he's gonna have to seal his well, and, and, yeah, that, so that's all.
I know originally, he wasn't thrilled to death with that idea. Has he come around?
I don't know. I mean, I've spoken with Jeff a little bit on and off, but not about that, to be honest. Well, it's a requirement from the state.
Right, right, he under, he understands.
Yeah, so there's not, yeah, there's not much to do. Okay, go back. No, that, I think, I think he's something, this is for public.
I've said so many times. Okay, we are, all in, all in favor of a public hearing?
All right.
Anyone wishing to come up and talk about this? Seeing none, make a motion to close public hearing.
A second.
No, we can, all in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second?
I see.
Roll call. I'll be for the roll call. So this is the first process. So Mike, I mean, when do we start going after this?
Boy, you are jumping ahead.
Oh, I want to, uh?
No, 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 that's because we, we I want to tie it in with Frank. Develop a spec and so forth. So if, I think it's probably, even though it's it's a single property. Obviously to get there is not the easiest thing in the world, so uh, you need to authorize us, which should be reimbursable as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Lisa, do we bond first? Maybe we do. What's the order here?
The next step, I believe, is our contract with the D E P and then the bonding and then moving forward. That's my understanding. Now, whether the bonding process can be coinciding with Mike's work, I don't know, but.
I'll have that ready for next one.
Yeah, as soon as they get our adopted ordinance, they'll work on the contract.
Yeah, you should, it should be one property. I, I can't. I guess we'll find out how quickly.
They already sent us a draft. They just couldn't finalize it until we got through this.
Then again, everybody knows we're doing this in Franklin and it's, you know, it's not a huge project bigger than this and it was going pretty good. So I would suspect, you know, we'll see.
Right.
Same people involved, I'm sure are down in the trenches.
Right.
So.
My hope is we can get some.
Well, hopefully it can tie into the Franklin work. And again, there is a bid opening on the Franklin project. Franklin is at the bid right now. We've gotten actually a lot of interest in contract to, to our spot. Bid opening is October the second, I think, if that's a Wednesday. Um, and then potential contract award at, at Franklin's Monday meeting, which I think is the, on Sunday maybe.
Yeah, right. It's Monday after the.
Yeah, so, um, you know, and then that, that will, you know, be a while till, I mean, that's, that's a much bigger project. So hopefully contractor will still be, whoever gets the, the award in Franklin will be interested in doing an award agreement, which provides the, the equipment there and supplies and so, so. We, we will see.
Okay. Okay, so now it's.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Only in the words, I know, uh, Brian was really involved in that. Is that something you want to discuss in public, private, uh, detective?
Yeah, he just asked me to take a look at it. He thought we needed one, so.
Table's next one, so he has time to review it.
Yeah.
Unless somebody else wants.
No, but just one quick question. Obviously you sent this through and everything because you looked at it. Um, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I had to, I had to revise it. Yeah.
It is?
Uh, some could say that, yes.
That's why I will say.
I'm just the attorney, uh, committee man, so I do all the checks.
I, I just don't understand people dropping off mattresses. You know, hitting mattresses. I understand it. They don't have the place to dump it.
Well, there, there's that.
This is up in Warren County. It's up in.
You're back to relying on everybody does what? Right, and that's not fixed.
A D P W, one of the seasonal drivers should try advertising. I'm not, oh, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we, uh, uh, put in an advertisement for.
I think he was looking for, um, hopefully two. He's losing, he's losing two, so he's looking to replace them.
Yeah. I was trying to go away fast, if you know how many.
Sorry.
How many, you need to want? A couple of them left.
Uh, yeah, a couple of them. Their jobs are now conflicting with their availability and one person is completely not in the picture anymore to drive.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I'll make a motion to approve the new membership of Thomas Scudery to the fire police and Joseph Messi the fifth, that, that firefighter. And they're like, second, and Wesley Thomas, exactly.
How old is Joseph Messi the fifth? He'll be a young, he's a freshman. A freshman, no kidding. God, God bless that family, man. He's, he's the future chief. Yeah, no, right, absolutely, right.
He's got an uncle and a father before he gets to be.
No, right, he's, he's in line, but man.
Yeah. The old time family.
That is a dedicated firefighting family.
It's gonna get any better.
Yeah.
Bob, I have a motion and a second on that one.
Yep, roll call.
Uh, Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek? Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
B B G Real Estate Affairs, what do we have to do? Are we gonna talk about whether?
Yeah, I spoke to Mike and we, if we can move forward, uh, basically I drafted the same resolution that we do at the beginning of the year for all of our professionals, but I drafted it solely for B B G. Last year, it sufficed to do a, a motion on the record to have her, them assist Jen with one commercial, um, matter, but it, they now want a resolution, so.
Yeah, but this is, that's a company.
If there's a conflict with Mike's office.
So I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution ninety twenty four authorizing the word non-fair and open contact with B B G Real Estate Services.
I'll make that move.
In a second.
Second.
Any further questions, Thomas, especially?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Okay, Turkey Trot for B P O, open spaces pretty much.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're having no problem.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the Turkey Trot that Thomas reported to P P O on November twenty second.
I'll make that motion.
Any, I'll second. Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Uh, looking for a motion to authorize, you know, to permit the next speakers international to practical date change. I believe we had a, we originally gave them approval for certain dates.
Yeah, for a single day permit.
She didn't use it and now she got it for the second date. What is the second date?
Well, she provided me with three dates, um, I, subject to the chief's approval. I believe he wanted it, um, satisfied by the end of the month, Rich. If I correct me if I'm wrong, so she offered Thursday, the twenty sixth or Monday, the thirtieth. I didn't think we'd have a position on that, so.
So it's over, we're authorizing three days, twenty sixth with the thirtieth. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any further questions, Thomas, especially? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
And looking for a motion to approve solicitor's print for disaster solutions, Inc., Ryan Rogan and Gorgorimo Solis. What's that for, uh?
These were on the agenda last month for approval. There was four of them. Uh, chief, uh, completed his review and has denied two, so we have two on the agenda for consideration.
Motion would be only for those.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
A second? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Go.
Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
It was sent to them. I haven't received a response.
Well, I have a meeting with them this Wednesday. We will ask. If we have any questions or comments, I'm for a spot.
No.
Mike, you invited, uh, Comcast here tonight?
Yeah, at the last meeting, uh, there was a discussion about the number of complaints that the committee had received, so I was directed to send a letter to Comcast asking them to appear at this meeting. So.
Well, I guess Brian's not here and he's one of the most concerned of what's going on.
Mayor, I'm Rob, the being government affairs director with me down back in from Comcast construction and Ryan Anderson from Toronto. Mm-hmm. Contractor. Yeah, well, so, um, at our last meeting, there was a place. Uh, we went over the same thing that he put a motion. Uh, from my stance, uh, as manager, I put those in motion. Um, beyond that, I know there was some, some issues with E P L supervision in Rhino Side. Uh, provided that he is no longer company. Uh, so going forward, he's been addressed. The underground in the, in Greenwich, other than one small subdivision is completely completed. So there will be no more underground going on outside of a small pocket that we're trying to work on. Uh, and this is not, I'm not saying it's completed with restoration, but it's completed as far as the structure goes. Um, the restoration is, we had a list that we were being, I was being told was being worked. We had addresses, customer contact, whatnot. Uh, that list was provided to me on a regular basis. Um, as far as I knew, they were being paid care. Uh, that's what I was understood. Um, come to find out, it was not apparently. Um, the cus, the customers that have contacted me directly, I have converted those that they care of. I know there is one currently that did a single issue, uh, which I know I contacted. I also know that I believe Ryan made contact with him.
Some, some on merge lines.
Yeah, so. Specialist coming. They're still the, uh, area of fault will fill. Uh, situation.
Well, that, which sidewalk that expects this wall.
Yeah, that whole.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all part of it.
I'm working.
Lord suppression.
That got me.
Okay.
Remember for the.
All right, yeah, but, yeah, I, yeah. I, I'm, I'm. So, so basically when, when the letter came, obviously it struck me interested in saying, you know, what's going on? I caught me off guard. Uh, because I hadn't heard anything personally since our last meeting. Nobody's contacted me.
It's, what, who's your last name? August twenty eighth?
Uh, whenever we were called here with.
I'll see all the forty, we have a list and.
I don't think there's a meeting on.
No, 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 that was my fact. I brought. We achieved that.
Laborry fight around the twentieth.
I was also made aware, um, that I, I was not privy to, that, that are, there was, uh, some road repair missing too, that didn't make the second list. Uh, you know, I've reached out to all image, you know, all the three years, I've been calling them. Has the okay. They're waiting on our deposit check from corporate and then they're gonna wrap that up before.
Well, what are you telling us tonight? Then we're constructing, done in lawn and yards and there's complaints that the lawns weren't fixed. You're gonna come back and correct this action.
A hundred percent. So, so where, where the miss is on our end is uh, well, these are my ends, you know, there, there's layers, so. Everyone, like, when I came here and whether you were privy to meeting or not, it'd be all like four months. Um, at that meeting at that time, I, I gave my number and I said, if there's anything that is not being, please go to me at an escalation, I'll take care of it. I didn't hear anything, so I didn't think there was any escalation.
We haven't heard anything from Comcast in months. Like, there's wires sticking out in the ground all over the townships.
There, there were, I, again.
This is for months. Don't, don't say it's working on, like, we're gonna have to, this is still.
No, so that's not, that's not what I was about to say. What I was about to say.
Can't tell. I've had it with Comcast, just so you know.
Understood. What I was about to say was that I apologize, that was not brought to my attention now that it is.
Shouldn't have been brought to your attention. You, you did work and just left wires sticking out of the ground, never came back.
I apologize, sir.
It's not one or two sites. It's all over.
And that's why the employees no longer went.
Were you, were you his boss?
I wasn't.
Did you ever go out and check on him?
No.
Also falls back on you.
Sure.
You guys, I've had it with, I've had this, this project. In, in hindsight, I would have never, I would have never, but, and I was very high on Comcast when this came in the first time. I would have never voted yes to allow Comcast to, that's not disappointing, I have any questions.
Is one of the reasons, one of the wires? Because, Karen?
What's that?
Is it? Aren't some of the exposed wires, especially where there, the, uh, there's reels that are wrapped?
Yeah.
But that's, are because of the county pool, but.
Yeah.
So, you guys still can't finish.
Yeah, so like the county basically put a a little of a bridge across between Greenwich and that. So basically they said that even if they were to come within an inch of their right of way, that we had filed up a permits that we filed. We've been working with them on over here. Um, every time we give them what they want, they come back saying they want something else. We right away, Greenwich was just adopted, which you play the role in. So with that being said, in order for us to extend from these neighborhoods to the poles to light you up, they wouldn't allow us until the permits were done. So we had to run a coil so that we could extend it to the poles to light it up. So that's the only reason why you're seeing those existing, there are fifteen different sites. Um, as far as I know, and as far as we know, everything is verified to the county. It's just in Bill's hands, uh, they continue there. Um, as soon as you give us a green ice, we will have that buried within, like, right away.
This, this is the first time that we've, throughout in Jersey, that we've experienced a county insisting that we get a right of way for their areas. Usually the municipal rate of ways allow us to do work in the count, on the county roads. So this was a, a new procedure. It took about six or seven months to get a right of way for with, with Warren, which is one of the police. Now you still don't like the wires.
Well, you know, I guess.
You're not allowed to do the work.
You know, I, I guess that explains part of it, but I, I think the general consensus, and that's why I wish Brian was. Brian originally didn't even want to, he's done that, and I, he didn't say contact. So I'm, I'm rarely, rarely talking before ever approved again, creating a list of subcontractors, we're being, I thought Comcast would have their own people or whatever, but I, I think work was sloppy and shoddy. It was dirty, wasn't cleaned up nice afterwards. And, and it took me a while to come to that conclusion. People were calling and complaining, as I run around, look, I started to realize that, right? I mean, the work here was just not great.
Well, as, as they said, we're gonna as we complete, uh, once we get the Warren County issue resolved, we're gonna take restoration.
Start going around cleaning up all the yards.
And we're gonna make sure that they're clean.
I mean, because you're gonna miss the opportunity to plant grass seed probably in another couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, I, I do know that all restoration was done on the yards, whether rain and grass seed didn't grow and rain washed some things away, that's a hundred percent possible. But we have done restoration.
Rain in August, then she bright dried out in mid-summer.
A hundred percent, but it's, it's restoration has been done. Whether we have to go back through and do it a, a second, third time at some spot, sure.
Well, so what, what we're, I guess what we're saying is you're a new guy in charge. You're gonna make sure these things are taken care of.
Yes. So I, I can say again, we're not here to make excuses, you know, um, at least definitely not.
If you're, you use the wall a lot.
Well, I don't, I don't.
At the point, there's no excuse.
So, so I don't, okay, so I don't make excuses when I speak. Everything I tell you, I'm actually gonna do, which I've done to the best of my abilities. However, at the same time, from where I struggle is I have four different people below me that I have to sit there and trust what they're telling. So of course, when you guys sent your letter, I took it very seriously because it, it shocked me. I, that is not what we're out to do. I do a lot of these meetings and I stand behind what I tell people. I said that when I was met with you. So with that being said, when I called Ryan right away, he was not privy to some of it. He looked into it. He did what he needed to do on his appointment sign. We started pulling all the records, everything that was said, he was being done, he thought was being done as well. So it's not an excuse. We are gonna get it taken care of. He's been on it. He's dumped all over it. He is making sure the crews are doing what they need to do. We are a hundred percent gonna make sure that you are good. Okay, we will check in with you regularly. If you want, we can give you whatever you guys require to have this, to have the comfort that we are doing what we say we're gonna do. So what we have in the past, I apologize. Um, I've done twenty projects. I've worked closely with all the engineers here. I have very good relationships. I want to make sure that you guys are satisfied. I understand your frustrations. This is your town. We don't want to come in here and just start digging up your town and causing problems for you. That's not, that's not what we want to do. So I can tell you, I can promise you going forward.
Well, I think the communication has to be better. The last couple of months, that was the problem too with communication. Because if you ever go back and look at my meetings, I've joked several times that communication with Comcast is terrible. Ironically, your communications were breached. And, and your communication is terrible.
And Mayor Lisa and, and Mike have my email. If there's any questions, they come up at a meeting, please.
So Mike, you're gonna say. So Mike, you're gonna say, you're you're people resting on top of this?
Yeah, let me, let me just for everybody's benefit, what I passed out quickly, and none of it's new. Was an email. There's, there's a copy of the email that I sent to Alan, um, back on, you know, August twenty second, which kind of is more of a global project wide issues. Uh, that still were out there. And then the next page is, is where we know of roadway pavement repairs that need to be managed, so. And I got the guy.
So, so these have not been done?
No, they are still upset too.
No, sure.
Yeah.
So they. Apparently they had sent this list to her. She will have four of it, so I just gave her permission.
Yeah, because that's, this was with Leon and I think Pat and Brian water office went, drove around, and this is what we came off.
So when they.
But this goes back a little, little bit, but but anyhow, thi- this is not all too comprehensive because obviously they they still need to get the county approval in place so that they can finish. Running their, uh, running their, their vein. Um, and then hopefully they're gonna get it, everything wrapped up and done.
Yeah, they, the once the, once the county work is done, obviously their restoration is very, very ideal or how they want it done, but we're gonna do it, um, so.
Maybe we're remiss by not having that type of requirement like the county. Maybe we should have made them jump for loans when they came and we wouldn't be where we're at. Maybe we were remiss.
So the restoration they're asking for is not much different than what they're doing. They just, the depths they want us are at are are pretty, pretty long. They want us four feet down no matter what, which is. Not usually the case, as they also don't want us anything quality ground, they want us to put it back there. We have to be soil tested, we have to get active put in, they want a certain amount of topsoil is. It's a lot, but we're gonna do it. Um, so with that being said, once those sites are done, um, that will activate all the the residents that will be built. Um, and then if beyond that, it's just aerial work, which obviously does not require any restoration. That'll be aerial work, which we submitted to them. Um, on their county roads, or if you will, well, make sure that they're on board.
Think we also have all, Mike, I don't know. There's two spots on Deborah where they dug into the street. And I thought they were.
Two spots on Deborah?
It's about a two foot by two foot.
Oh, okay.
One in front of Rick McDonald's old house, and I think the other one was two boys up.
Run my daughter's house?
Well, it's on your daughter.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, so it's not, it's not toward, it's McDonald's and then closer up, uh.
Up towards Ar- Ar.
Off, yeah.
Uh.
So I don't know why.
I can't answer. I don't know. And I drive on the devil. I I I I.
I walk that whole network.
And then there's also a sidewalk on Arbor, somewhere around Bill Teach's house, where they have a green box, but the sidewalk is cracked in a number of places and it's something down. I don't know. That up several months ago. On Arbor? Yeah, yeah, by pieces, yeah, somebody called me about that a couple of months ago. So that.
All right, well, that.
I thought it was on whenever that's the.
I don't think, I don't think so. Where, that's, no. Right, we're.
In fact, the complaint there was they dumped the same place up twice.
Yeah, we, we actually, before we do digging, we do videos and pictures, so just send us whatever there is and we'll have backups as far as what it looked like before we dig.
I'll get the house numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I brought that like two or three months.
The Deborah that you're speaking about, is that a moratorium street?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is, okay. Cause it sounds like you're talking about potholes, which, I mean, we made it, Leon was very clear on what streets he loved to touch, so.
Yeah, we were, we, we made it very clear. That's what I was thinking.
No, you did. So I, I, as far as I was told, there was no potholing on any roads that were moratorium, again.
Uh, well, and that, I agree with you. We, I mean, we. Basically, held your feet to the fodder, then would, you know, the moratorium is almost gonna be up pretty soon too. You should have waited in the year and.
Well, I was told, I was told that all locations, because a lot of time we're here, I I spoke to you and I said, you know, you're like, well, let's see what you can do. We came back and we said all locations we want to touch the roads. That's what I was told, and that's what I was.
And if, right, and if you just couldn't get it done without opening the road, you would come back here and explain to the committee, but you managed to pull that off. Now, the, the, the other area though, that we, we gotta talk about and resolve is the Revere Road situation. Where the affordable units are down in Greenwich Chase that kind of by five nineteen.
Is that the one that we haven't done yet?
Yes, that one area, which is because of, well, we think you're gonna have to pay the whole. But we've, we've had this stuff.
So, so to be a hundred percent transparent, that's where we're at right now, is trying to look at approval process for the amount of money it's gonna cost to run that underground. So we're just trying to look at the best way to do this, because every often we've come that we've tried to alleviate having to pave two streets, um, has been enough. So that's, it's, it's right now sitting with senior leadership and they're looking at it, and as far as I can say, I guess I'm not sure.
So, I mean, that's the single biggest thing from the township side of things with your system, that's the single biggest area. There's a lot of other cleanup, fix up stuff that it's simply, you know, um. Which of course is gotta get taken care of.
Well, that's an affordable complex.
Yeah, that's the original affordable housing project in township.
So that's, that's a very important area.
Yeah, Revere Road and Austin.
Maybe I'll die in. Well, we started off good, because you came when the first couple of meetings and you've always did a good presentation and.
I try. I try. I don't like.
What a ride. So let's try to part, let's try to part on good terms, at least, okay?
I, that is my goal. Like, I, I just, just for full transparency.
Me personally, I'm very dissatisfied with many residents in town, kids are extremely dissatisfied. Let's try to leave.
I understand.
On a good note.
That is, that is our goal. Um, just so you know, um, I have moved on to a different department. I'm here. Because I was here in a weekend, so I would make sure I had spoken to you. Um, but going forward, there will be another manager who will be handling the situation. I'm not far behind, but.
Leah, Leah, Lily?
Yeah, chick.
Okay, lady.
Lady.
Yeah, we, we met when we first met with you, Mike, when that, it was Shane.
Oh, was she there? Okay.
But regardless, Ryan is, Ryan's on it. Um, he's very noted on, he's, he's digging through everything and he's.
And if you're hearing issues, please email me directly and then I.
I know you addressed a couple of things worse, and I appreciate that.
But you can always reach out to me as well. Like, I, I'm not going anywhere. Um, you have my number. I gave my card again. Uh, but I just want, you know, going forward, as far as construction overseeing, I'm not overseeing.
Now has been response.
No, we.
Yeah.
Good for the start. I'm wearing wine.
We're gonna, we're gonna make it all right, and when it's done, you're gonna be happy with it.
No, that's one question. Absolutely. Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind if any cards or numbers, any guys are good, as far as conduct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
Might, we gotta do this.
An executive, if you want to discuss that?
If you want, sure.
An executive?
Yeah, sure, yeah, an executive. It's a security thing, so.
Okay. Um, let's move public comment up before executive. I'll make a motion to open public comment. Anything?
Second.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
Anyone wants to come up and make their comments?
Yeah.
How's fast? You have to start planning better, come like a six thirty. So you don't have to listen to, as I always say, a long hour of the fight. I guess, gentlemen, ladies, pass the resolution for me to get my, so I, I wanna say thank you for that. And, uh, also, whenever you're ready, if you have any information, anything you think I should know, anything I should do, please let me know so we can move forward.
We, does everybody know?
Just don't.
Everybody, we go, okay, good.
I'm stopped, Scott Darn for twenty two minutes, sorry, I'm down, I'm fixing to get a sewer line.
You know. Did your attorney get in touch with Brent?
Me, Easeman, we're.
Okay, you weren't on me, okay, fine.
I have got some misinformation and let it last.
Are, are my emails helping, I hope, when I?
Just, you know, you know, where are we going from here? I mean, who's the decision maker to say, go do it, or is it, is it gonna happen because of where?
Me, I guess, to be honest. It, they have a agreed to this extension. That's the big step. That's that not. Now it's just building it, which is very simple. The manhole, about forty feet of pipe, bang, into their manhole, so done.
Right.
And then you have to make the connection on it, on your line to this new man.
Okay, so nothing happens until a manhole gets there? I mean, has, has steps been made or?
I believe, uh, you gotta, I believe so. That's, that's the walls. I mean, they're, they've been very good, actually.
They are, they're amazing.
They've been very good. They could have been a lot less accommodating, a lot less accommodating than they have been.
I agree, and that's why, that's why, you know, I'm not looking to stir it up hot. I'm just, you know, just, you know, to keep bumping into someone, maybe I'll, maybe I'll remember.
Yeah, and what we're doing, just so you guys know, there's a, there's a neighboring property next door to him, further east, further away from the walls, okay? There will, there's no service, uh, sewer line or service that's going in that property at this point. Cause that would actually change their permit with the state and some other reasons. But we're asking Mr. Dernin to grant an easement along the back of his property so. That when that guy wants to connect at some point, which he, it's only be his best interest.
Yeah.
He will, there will be an easement of allowing him to connect into the manhole on his property and, and, and be connected. So may never happen, but it's go, it's at least the facilities. And the, the legality to allow the pipe to be installed, it will be there, so. So just that point out.
So you're gonna tear up in the neighbors yard today, where the sewer related, it's water related.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, that's, that's, that's a different sewer line. That's a two inch fourth main from the pump station everyone.
Oh, that's the sewer, that's right.
Yes, there's gonna be another sewer line out the back, which is my house in the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I saw that.
No, that's the, that's, that's the, as he said, that's the force main for all the flow from the willows to connect into our system.
So, thank you very much, and like I said, I look forward to getting sewer, you know, building. Anyone else? No, okay, I make a motion to close public comments, second, all favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to go to the executive session regarding various fires and privileges on professionals, security, security systems, police personnel, and police contractual vacation sellback.
I mean, wait that minute.
But all favor?
Aye.
It shouldn't be that long. The engineer doesn't have to talk at all. We've had.
Hour forty five minutes.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to come out of executive site.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Yes, yeah, yes, Mayor, we came out of executive session at seven forty five PM, where we discussed, uh, three attorney client privilege matters dealing with professionals, security and security system. We also had a personnel matter dealing with the police and a contractual matter, uh, dealing with the po- police and vacation sellback. No official action was taken. Cops in these minutes will be available at, at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of a video doorbell, uh, doorbell cameras as discussing, uh, discussing executive session.
I'll make the motion.
In a second, I can, a roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yeah.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the MFA and the, and develop an instant response plan for IT system as discussing executive session, anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make that, a second.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to approve the purchase of vacation time from police department, uh, personnel as discussing executive session.
I'll make a motion.
A second, roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyek?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
I'll make a motion to hire Daniel Kelly, Kelly is land use secretary as discussing executive session.
Second.
Oh, roll call?